Call to order. Call to order this the Monday, January 22nd, 2024 meeting, the Ellisville Town Council. Marshall, do you want to do the prayer or the pledge?
I'll do the pledge.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, who was doing the prayer?
Would you care?
No.
Father, we're coming before you this evening, and we ask for wisdom to run the town like you would like it to be run, and to bring you glory and to operate upright and righteously, Father, before the people and before you. We ask for your help in all this, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, roll call, please.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
Okay, the first thing we come to tonight is the boards and commission appointments, we're revisiting two of them. The first is plan commission, this is a member of government appointed by council vote. Chris Klaus from the fire department has agreed to serve. Is there anyone else who has someone to put forth as a name?
Zach Michaels would also serve, he's of desire.
Okay. Is there motions, or is there anyone else, I'm sorry? Is Zach on BZA, is he not?
Yeah, he understands he'd have to come off the BZA, he served on the plan commission before and would like to come back.
Okay. It's a council discussion, we have two candidates.
They're both candidates, great.
I don't know if he wants to that exit.
Well, we might be talking to you about being on the BZA then next.
So you want to withdraw, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, so we're left with Zach Michaels.
I'll make a motion to appoint Zach Michaels to the plan commission.
Second.
Motion is second, when you're ready.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Parks and Recreation Board.
Megan Day is willing to take another four-year, she's been very active on the board since 10th, 99% of meetings, so we're glad to have her.
Is there anyone else to put forward? Is there a council motion on Mrs. Day?
I'll make a motion to appoint Megan Day for the Parks and Recreation Board.
I'll second.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting on January 8th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain. Action pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. First resolution tonight is 03-2024 to designate holidays for town of Ellisville employees. This is you?
I guess, good. I think we came up with the holidays that we thought were appropriate to be off. With the board suggesting, we added election day, and so we did four years of long holiday, so we'll read them off unless you want me to.
Counsel questions?
I do have one, because I know they mixed up when we was all talking about it. So, were we going to add days and take off some? Or did it end up with then we didn't want to take off certain days, so we left the added some, or?
We considered it, but with William Ellis mentioned that he thinks election day might be one of the most important days to be active as a citizen, I believe, and maybe put words in his mouth, but he thought it was important, and so we added them back in, and so we added a couple days instead of two more.
Okay.
So primary and election day would be two days.
Okay.
Further discussion by council? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, we're back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 03-2024 to designate holidays for town of Ellisville employees.
Sorry.
Motion is second, Noel, when you're ready.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 04-2024 to transfer LED lit ED funds, police and fire for liability and property insurance.
I can discuss this if you'd like. So, when we had budgeted previously for this, we hadn't received our projected spending for that, and it went up 16%, and so the fastest way to do it, because of the property liability being in the lit ED, was to just make these two transfers, and I reached out to both department heads before Amber and I even discussed it as a possibility.
Do you have any problems with this?
No, no, no.
Okay. Questions from council? Action from council?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 04-2024 to transfer lit ED, police and fire for liability and property insurance.
Second.
Motion is second.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 05-2024, accepting dedication of Jacob Court.
Yes, briefly, Jacob Court here in Ellisville is one parcel with seven duplexes on it, and it is privately owned, and the owner of that parcel is Chang Brothers Development, Inc., and they are out of San Jose, California, and they would like to dedicate Jacob Court to the town, and I would ask that the town council table this to the next meeting because it's a question of who needs to sign the dedication, whether it's a corporation or a partnership, and as I said, they're out of San Jose, California, so I will have that ready for the next meeting.
Questions from the council?
Well, just to be clear, what exactly does this mean, they're dedicating? Are they coming into town, are they already in town, what's?
They're just dedicating the street. The street is privately owned because it's part, it's part of that parcel.
Okay.
And so, and Mr. Hetty can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the town already plows that, and so.
Yes, it's a situation that's gotten overlooked from the past. What brought it all on is the, I can't remember the person's name, but they're the people that manage it for this company, and they had problems with residents on, I don't remember if it was actually on Jacob Court or Iron Court, Ian Court, so they reached out to us for signage, didn't realize there was no parking out there. Well, I couldn't sign a street that actually doesn't belong to us, because when I actually looked it up, I noticed that it's plotted as one lot, so I made it a private drive. So Jacob Street is the town, Iron Court is the town, but Jacob Court is a single plat, like she put in the packet, and I told them that, you know, we've been doing it for the 22 years that I've been here, plowing it, we wouldn't stop now until it was all taken care of, so.
Okay.
Further counsel comments or questions?
What kind of shape is it rolling in?
It's a good shape.
Okay.
And Kip, what was the issue, was it a parking issue, or?
Residents were parking on the street whenever most of the street, if not all, are no parking streets in the town limit, so it was a complaint-driven problem to the property management.
Anything further? And is there a motion to act on Mr. Brown's request to table?
I move we table Resolution 5-2024, accepting dedication for the Jacob Court.
I'll second.
Whenever you're ready.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Two ordinances on first reading tonight, the first is ordinance 2024-01, to amend 2023-18, the salary ordinance. Anyone?
I can take this. So there's just a couple of things that were incorrect, and we need to add to the salary ordinance, and one of them was the police hours, the overtime for FLSA. The standard is supposed to be 86 instead of 85.5, so we need that to change. And then, we're also doing a biometric screening for our employees that's going to keep our health insurance steady at the same rate for the next two years, and so in order to do that, we have to provide an incentive for our employees per the contract, so we're going to be adding a $300 reduction for employees that participate in that. And the per diem for the meals was previously set at $35, and I'm not sure how we came to the $50 amount, but it was a consensus at the supervisors' meeting.
Probably a poll.
Yeah, state average.
Is that where it was from? Okay, I just couldn't remember, I blanked on it.
If I can, a question, where is the $300 per employee coming from?
That came from our IU Health representative, they said it needed to be a $300.
Are they refunding that back to us, or are they expecting us to pay that?
So we're doing it as a premium reduction to keep our rate the same. If we hadn't accepted that $300 amount, our rate increase would have gone upwards of 20%.
Okay, but again, the question becomes, is that coming out of their money, or is that coming out of our money?
It's coming out of the employees' portion that they pay, and I'm trying to answer your question in the best way, because I understand what you're asking.
Well, say what, why don't you research that for us, because this is only a first reading, so that way we can have it before a second reading?
Yes, sir.
Because I think if it's coming out of our portion, we're going to have to do some more work beyond just amend the salary ordinance, so.
Because it needs to be funded.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's an unfunded liability there. Any other questions on this case, the council? Okay, and do we have these posted somewhere where the public can see these? Or are we posting them?
I will double check on that, it's my understanding that they are posted in the packets, but I need to double check, because I know that I'm behind on posting the minutes specifically.
Just as long as we get it so the public can see it before next meeting.
This is not on Gateway, correct?
No, these would not be on Gateway. The ordinances are filed with American Legal, so they do go there.
But only after we ratify them.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll move to the next ordinance, which is 2024-02, to approve a business online platform for payroll and utility bill.
Noel and Amber, the utilities clerk asked me to prepare this ordinance to allow them to use what's called an e-commerce platform or online business platform for paying bills, doing direct deposits for payroll, and also to process utility payments. And the town already has an ordinance in place that allows for ACH, automatic clearinghouse transactions, and electronic funds transferred, and I just took that ordinance and tinkered with it, and just added some language to make clear that it could also be used to change funds, transfer funds, do lateral transfers between accounts. It would allow utility payments to be processed, and would allow the utilities clerk to use those services in addition to the town clerk treasurer.
Okay. Questions, comments from council? Do you want to say anything?
I actually, so I'm just curious with this, because currently right now, like with a lot of other bills I pay regularly, I can electronic transfer, but with the town utilities, I have to, my bank has to send a check. Will this eventually be able to, or I can put the routing number and account number, and, or I mean, it'll show up on the list that I'll be able to do reoccurring transfers from my bank?
Correct, it'll make the utility side of it a lot more time-effective and easier for the customers to set up the payments, and the main reason why we initially started to look into it is because currently, when I take payroll, I have to take it to the bank on a zip drive, that I have to hold in my hand and take it. With this way, we can set it up to where we have the deputy clerk inputting it, the clerk treasurer approving it, and then the bank actually approves it also before it's sent out, so it's really just an added step to make sure that there's more oversight.
Excuse me, other questions from council?
What's the additional cost, Mrs.?
So, the additional cost right now, we would have to initially buy the machine, and Gary Brenley, who I'm working with at People's State Bank, has said that the machine to rent it would be $30 a month, or we can buy it outright for 500, and that's the machine that would be able to actually run the checks for the utility payment side, and we already have business online set up, we've just not utilized the platform. So we've actually been paying for some of those services that we're just not utilizing. So the total figure I don't have exactly yet, because we're going to pay on what we actually use versus just the lump sum that we've been paying and not utilizing, but I can get you an exact figure on that also.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind when it comes back for second reading.
As soon as Gary gives the, he should be getting it to me soon, I was hoping he'd have it tonight for me, but I, we just really finalized it once we got the ordinance from Darla about the pricing, and so I can forward that information directly to you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now again, both of those will come back on the next town council meeting for second reading. We'll look at them then. In Vision Ellis will update.
Excuse me, Dan Berry here. The only update I have is we're going to have a task force meeting tomorrow, the 23rd, from 3:00 to 4:30 here at town hall. And I'd like to see anybody, come and scout in here.
Yes, sir. Moving down to new business, a new loader for, I'm not exactly sure who's going to use it.
We'd like, we'd like to cable that for now. Dylan, so he's not, people come in here, make a decision.
We need to table that Darla, since it's just a purchase, can we just jump over it?
Yeah, I think you just, you don't have to do a formal motion to table.
Moving next, who do you want to do the next to?
Actually, I'm going to let Kip do it.
So Department of Public Works has a request for two positions. First is a laborer one position, and next is a laborer two position.
So, one position is actually, we're actually filling a vacant position. And that is, was a laborer one position, we interviewed two guys. The one for the laborer one position, his name's Cole Grubb, he's from Ellisville area here. He presently works with the Monroe County Highway Department, he's pretty fluent in operating equipment. He's also had backgrounds in sewer and water work, along with paving and all that, so. Do you want to just do the one at a time, or you want me to go ahead and talk the other one through?
Explain the other one.
The other one is Dylan Day for the laborer position two. Dylan had previously worked for the town before, was a very good employee, was knowledgeable on the day-to-day aspects of everything that goes on. Unfortunately, a year ago, he had to move out of state, and six months ago or so, they came back, so, and he was looking to come back to the town, so. Both of them, like I said, both of them, Dylan, like I said, he knows everything, the ins and outs, so I guess I come before you to hire Cole Grubb as a laborer one at the full pay, since he's coming from another municipality that's got the same experiences we got here, and Dylan Day, hire him back as a laborer two at full wages of what a laborer two makes as well.
I'd like to add, too, the laborer two is a new position. We've had it in the next level trail grant narrative from the beginning, that we would hire two people to help process that construction project, and so we also will be hiring another additional employee in the future. It runs a dual path with the water rate increase, which we had, we were going to add two employees to that as well, so this is in the budget for both.
Both positions.
The next level trail and the water rate, so we have the money for it, but to be clear, laborer two is a new position.
Okay. And I do have Amber, and I believe you was involved too, they went through the numbers as well. I had the money in NVH as well, to be able to contribute the one-third as well on the laborer two position. Of course, the one, we're already replacing, we already had the money there anyways, for the laborer one position.
So just to confirm, did we budget for the laborer two position as well?
It's in.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's in the next level trail grant, so we did it.
Okay, but we still have to have an appropriation for it, so did we budget for this going in?
We have the money within the budget, yes.
But we still would have to budget for that, correct? If it's in the budget, we have to allocate it to.
Right.
Well, we just haven't filled the position till, till, we're trying to do it tonight, but the plan and the budget incorporated these positions.
So we did talk about it during budget season and authorized that position there?
I don't know if we talked about it, we did, we talked about it during the rate increase, and it's part of the plan that, and we also talked about it with the next level trail, it's in the narrative. As far as, did we talk about it in person like this, I'm not sure.
Right, we just have to have it on the paper we sent to DLGF, that says these are our positions that we're going to be funding and allocating for.
Yeah, I don't think it's in there.
I don't think it's in that, no.
Okay.
No, we didn't leave any, list any new.
Yep. But we, the plan was to hire two new people.
Well, I get it, we just have to make appropriations lines for those two new people.
Okay, well, that would be something, I'm going to ask clerk and Amber to do.
Okay.
Yeah, Amber, Amber already talked to me about that, we were going to have to do an additional appropriation for it.
That's fine.
I have one other question, too, I mean, if this is grant-funded position, is it expire after the first year, or how long will that be?
It does, and so that's why I put it in our water rates, too, so that rate, we'll fund it from there on. So we'll, I mean, the plan is to hire a couple extra people after we go through a year of serious construction projects, and we will probably be done in '25 at some time, we may let one of the positions lapse, but we have a 10-year plan for the water department, and I think it's like a million-dollar plan. We do about $100,000 worth of work a year, and that labor is in that plan, and in the rates, as approved by the RERC, which we're still waiting, it's pending. I thought I was going to get to announce it tonight, but it's still pending. We have the money.
So, clarification, I mean, Darla, can we even do this right now? Don't we have to create the line in the budget?
I, Scott was just asking me about that, I think you can do it pending appropriation.
Because you're not planning on him starting tomorrow, right?
No, it'll be at least two weeks now.
So if we give him permission to hire, and then that's on our agenda in two weeks, we should be fine. Can you make that happen in two weeks? Okay.
Yeah, it will help me.
No worries. Okay, so let's split these apart, because there's two jobs. Is there questions, concerns, or motions on the first laborer one position, which is in budget, and it's just a replacement?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for the Department of Public Works to hire Cole Grubb as a laborer one.
Second.
Pam Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, how do we want to handle the second position? Do we want to go ahead and give him permission to hire, knowing it'll be two weeks before he starts? Or what do you want to do?
I mean, are you sure the funding's going to be there, I mean?
Mm-hmm, we have the funding through the next level trail grant for that.
I guess I'm fine with going ahead and prove it with the conditions.
So is that a motion?
Sure, why not?
Okay, did you have comments, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I just, I just had a question to make clear, after the next level trail grant ends, we have enough money with the new sewer.
Water.
Water rate to be able to cover it.
That's correct.
And that was planned from the get-go.
It is.
So, in other words, this next level trail grant is kind of taking the pressure off of that fund for, while we have it. And if we get it next year, can we, if we get another next level trail grant, will we be able to put that back in there if we're approved?
No.
Okay.
It would be a separate funding for whatever may be required for that command.
I understand, but if we put in another grant for next level trails, would we be able to also put in this position?
We would not.
Okay.
We would not want to do that.
Oh, you would not want to, okay, all right.
And I wanted to talk about during supervisor's comment, some of the new pressures coming before us.
Okay. There's a motion, is that correct?
There was one, I was about to ask for it.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, when you're ready.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Approval to the floor, anyone having business for the council, not part of our regular agenda? No one online? Now we're back to supervisor comments.
I'll start.
So, one of the things I want to talk about was, we had a power lunch in last Friday, Chamber put it on, it was for the solar eclipse happening on April 4th. So it was pretty interesting, a lot of.
April 8th?
April 8th. Well, I'm starting early.
I thought, how could you forget that?
I don't know. So anyway, there was a lot of interesting information, and I'd just like to make it public, anybody, especially a business that wasn't at the meeting might want to contact, contact the town, and we'll try to give them a list of things they might want to consider, everything from parking to their restrooms, do they want to be open, and we'll give them some information that's relevant to being able even go to and fro from the business during the event. So, I was, I thought I already knew most of what I needed to know, but after we did the panel discussion and everybody had their say, there's just a lot to be considered, and it's just not going to be a normal day, so. People think maybe 100,000 people will be in Ellisville, and maybe 400,000 in Monroe County, and that may be a real low number when we get to, get to the event. If it's good weather, the actual middle point, where you could say you is in the totality, as close as you could be, I think it's going to be like 100 feet east of CBS right now, so there's just a lot of excitement about it, and so people are going to come from far and wide to be part of this, I don't think we're going to have another one until.
2044.
2044.
Remember the rain date?
Pardon?
That's the rain date for this.
Oh, yeah, right.
Then August 8th, 2044.
Nice. And so anyway, I just wanted to point it out, because it will be an event, and things will be normal, and there are just all kinds of things to consider, and so I'd say there's at least a dozen things that any business needs to think about that are really important, so I just wanted to explain that it's not going to be a normal day.
The video is available on the Chamber's website, or Facebook page from that afternoon's conference.
Yeah, and town hall will be closed, I can tell you that right now. And so, most of our workforce will be working, because the police and the fires come up with a pretty good plan, and they've been in on the beginning, they've been appoint people for setting up the logistics for how we're going to take care of the town when so many people are in it. The other thing I tell the board, we're doing lock lead copper rule from the EPA, and we're looking for lead lines, and I've talked about it a couple of times. So, we have finished phase one, in phase two, we have to go out and actually identify lines that we haven't been able to identify because of their age, anything before 1978, we didn't have, we, anything before 1978, we have to verify, field verify, and so it leaves us with about 2,400 properties that we're going to have to explore. So, there is some funding, and we're going to apply for. So there is some funding that we're going to apply for, I think, we believe $200,000 were eligible for, and they just came out with a new rule that says we cannot buy equipment with it, which was, we thought was the plan, and so we now, and you can't pay, you can't hire people to do the work, and so it looks like we'll be having to go to contractors to do the workforce, pothole, and this and that. We're going to try to do some of it in-house. It's another reason I need this additional person, it'll be a two-man crew at the very least, so I mean, the, the routine is we go out and pothole on each side of the meter pit, and once we're done, we have to fill the, the potholes back in, and like I said, there's 2,400 of them. We're going to try to do enough that, that we can break even by getting the $200,000, so I mean, we're just going to be involved more than I thought we were, and so just thought I'd mention that, and that will be, be start, starting in March, probably.
Mike, with this, are they going, okay, let's say you find lead, is it going to be replaced or what? Or is it just to identify?
Well, the EPA won't recognize, well, I'm getting ready to say, but it's the truth anyway, there's no lead lines in Elletsville.
Okay.
All the rural, rural systems in Monroe County are like, started in the 1970, there are no lead lines in their systems as well. A mark of whether there'd be lead lines, a lot of times there'd be galvanized setups, basically the saddle or the meter is, and we've had a few in the past, but when we dig up the lines, they're all, they've all been copper, and we've transitioned to CTS plastic pipe now, and so in 23, 28 years, we've never dug, dug up a lead line, and I'm positive we don't have any. We might have a couple, lead goosets were, a galvanized line was put in, and you have to transition so you can make a tap on the main, and they call them lead goosets, they're about this big, just like that, and so that might have some lead in it, but we don't expect to find any of those either, maybe five at most. So we just, we, we don't think we have a problem. A lot of times in the cities, lead lines were under concrete streets. I don't know why that happened, but I think they transitioned to lead for a while during the war, which you would think lead would have been the ideal thing since you make bullets out of them, but I don't know the whole history behind that. Blimpton, they had some lead lines, and I think they're working through their projects, so most of the small towns don't have lead lines.
Thanks.
But we're good, but you have to prove it, you can't just say you know it, so.
Thank you, swear.
That's okay with me. I think that's all I have.
Marshall?
Nothing much, just like to thank Kip and his crew for the weekend. They had a, had a probably a pretty tough weekend. They kept roads pretty, pretty clear. Really appreciate that. Thanks for helping us out. Appreciate it.
Nothing this evening.
Well, like Jimmy said, it's been a pretty adventurous last couple of weekends. This last Friday night, we, we were out doing some salt and sanding. The week before, the Department of Public Works had two major water main breaks on Wednesday and Thursday nights. Then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we were busy with treating roads, and I'll have to say that our first time out, we did a few breakdowns, but we're back up and going good now, and hopefully nothing will happen tonight, but we're ready for tonight if anything happens.
I have anything?
Well, did you have any?
No.
I'd like to add one more. So we just come out of the big freeze, and anybody that's had frozen lines in their pot, in their house, needs to understand that when they thaw out, they may start running. We had at least seven call-outs this weekend to emergency shut-offs because that was happening. So if you've had water in part of your house, and you've had like a back bathroom or whatever, and it was froze up, and you're waiting for it to thaw out, be aware that there's a good chance that it's broke the pipes and, and you'll have a pretty good leak, so know where your shut-off is in your house, and if you call the Elletsville Utilities after hours, it'll go to a call-out service, and we'll be out as fast as we can.
Anything else from the council?
I just want to thank the DPW for coming out. I was one of those people with frozen pipes, and I had three trips this, this weekend, and honestly, it was the longest, I think, before somebody came out was 20 minutes, and I'd called, wrote a router about 10 minutes before I called you guys, and they were there about 45 minutes to an hour after you guys got there. So thank you. Great job.
Anyone else? Seeing no further business, meeting is adjourned.